We're ready to go.
Hi, I'm Larry Kaufman and I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of the Vermont Town Meeting. I grew up in Bradford and went to my first town meeting with a senior class and just fell in love with the idea of moderating a town meeting. When I was in college, I actually moderated the Bradford Town Meeting once. The only unusual thing about that was that in New Hampshire, if a town, if it's an evening town meeting, and if a town meeting runs until midnight, you have to adjourn or recess and reconvene at 12:01. So that was the only unusual thing that I recall about that meeting. But anyway, I came to Bradford and after being really active in my teachers' union, I was elected as town and then village moderator in 1971. I took that job really very seriously. I was teaching civics at the time, I was teaching voter preparation at the time at Utesville, and so I really did enjoy the whole concept of the pure democracy that the New England Town Meeting exemplifies. Only in New England is the town meeting really seriously used. And it's used in all towns in Vermont except for cities, and then they give up the town meeting. Bradlborough does have an unusual, they have a representative town meeting, but they're the only ones that have that. Traditionally, the town meeting was held as a church and town affair. That's where actually it was organized around the congregational church, which believes in local authority, local control, and so it was a sense of that. At first, only proprietors, the property only men could vote, and then around 1777, 21-year-old men were allowed, and then finally, in 1917, even before they were allowed to vote in federal elections, women were allowed to vote at the town meeting. First, town meetings were held in large houses or in churches, the church or tavern or something like that. And then, for a time, they were held in the town hall, and then that burned and meetings moved over to Bradford Academy Auditorium, which was an absolutely wonderful meeting. It has great acoustics and comfortable seating and all of that sort of thing. One might ask, why March? Why hold it in March? Well, traditionally, for a farming community, that makes sense because your winter chores are done and you haven't quite gotten around to your spring chores. In those days, I suspect putting out your sap buckets didn't come till after a town meeting, but was now before. But there was a lull there for winter chores and spring ones, and this was a farming community, and that's why they held it that way. Meetings were really face-to-face, and that's the advantage of the traditional town meeting. That is, a group of interested people gather, they have a warn meeting, that's what the warning means. Everyone's warned that these items will come up, and if you don't, aren't interested in coming, that's fine. You'll know what will be discussed, who's warned. And so they would elect the officers, you know, selectmen, moderator, overseer of the poor, hungry, fence viewer, a whole bunch of those. And then the operation of the local government, roads, cemeteries, taxes, with frugality being the key to all of that. In those days, they had an overseer of the poor, and before a poor farm was created, the poor might actually be voted out of town. They didn't want them around on the public dole. It wasn't as common in those days for topics that did not deal with town affairs to be voted on. At the time of the Civil War, they voted on a bonus for the soldiers and they voted on a force for the colonel, that sort of thing, but otherwise, normally, it was just local affairs. You would always expect that those town meetings, up to the time that I was, that there would be a couple of people who would speak a lot, real curmudgeons would come out for Town Meeting Day. And so I suspect that most people did not speak. They voted, but they listened and that sort of thing, but they didn't speak. You'd have a few people, and Martina Stevan, who just passed away, was one of those. Arthur Hyde was one from Bradford. They would go through the town report with a fine-tooth comb, and they would hold the select board's feet to the fire on why this particular thing was off by 63 cents. They wanted to know where that 63 cents was, that sort of thing. And that actually did everyone else a favor because most people weren't as adverse with what was going on. Now, the town meeting that we have, the votes that we have this year and that we had last year because of the virus are obviously different from the face-to-face town meeting. And across the state, there have been moves to reduce the number of issues discussed at town meetings and have Australian ballot. So that you have a meeting, but you wouldn't vote for the officers, you wouldn't vote for the major money issues. Those would all be voted by Australian ballot. And there have been proposals for that in Bradford, but prior to the last two years, that just not happens. And across the state, they're wondering whether the fact that many, many towns are going to Australian ballot, not all are, but many are, will there be now a move to say, okay, maybe that's not such a benefit with doing things? So, some advantages and disadvantages. Normal participation in Bradford is about of the checklist. That's not a very high turnout. The participation by ballot is 20%. So it's more than double the number of people turn out. The face-to-face allows discussion, it allows questions from the floor. The select board sits up there in the front and people, a lot of people are willing to raise questions and say, would you please explain this or explain that? Now, this year, they will have an information session. Not many people will attend, not many people will ask questions, I'm sure. And so you lose that face-to-face. The other thing that's lost in having Australian ballot form of government is that you take what's on the warning and you either vote it up or you vote it down. And if you vote down the budget, that's it. We had to have a special election to deal with the second, much like the school district has done so famously over the many years. So there's no opportunity. Whereas if you're face-to-face, there's opportunities for amendments, which can then alter the budget. So a couple of years ago, who were those of us who felt that the select board had not put enough money in or sidewalks, and so we said, okay, we think we ought to raise the budget by $20,000 for more sidewalks. And we did, right then and there. We didn't have to wait. Okay, so there was an opportunity also to meet candidates for office. And although we never had debates or discussions between candidates, often because there was no opposition, but it was an opportunity to see that person. And at least they would stand up and give maybe a one- or two-minute presentation of who they are. So everybody got to know who Ryan was when we did that. I don't know who this thing is, but now I know what it looks like. And he says something about who he is, he sounds pretty good, so let's go with him. Somebody literally said that. And the other thing that it does is it allows presentations. So for example, when the fire department wishes to buy an expensive piece of equipment, it offers them the opportunity to stand up front and make a presentation, maybe even a PowerPoint presentation about the equipment. And so you know, that's never going to happen in Australian ballot with the information. It's just, it's going to happen. So you see I have a slight bias. So, I tend to think that the town meeting, the Australian ballot unfortunately may turn out to be the rule of the uninformed. People are going to vote, I'm against taxes. But I'm not going to listen to any discussion, I'm just going to vote no on the taxes, or whatever. And I'm wondering, I'm hoping that people will be more informed, will make an effort to read the reports and that sort of thing. But I'm hoping it's not going to be that. One other interesting factor, and some years ago, we had a professor from Cornell. And I was moderator for 41 years, but over those years, we had some really interesting characters come. Interesting people, people from China came because they wanted to know. And officials at the state level thought Bradford did a pretty good job to do some town meeting. And so they would send people from Germany and from China and wherever who were interested in that. The most interesting one was a man who was writing a book, a professor, on honeybee democracy. And he wanted to, according to the theory that he was a scientist from Cornell, that honeybees, when they swarm, send out rangers. And the rangers go and look for a better place to live. And they come back to the swarm and they dance. And they better their dance, others fall by the way, and then that one individual will determine where the swarm goes. And he wanted to know whether that ever happened at town meeting. Is there a point at which the motion seems to be going in this direction during discussion, and then so-and-so stands up and speaks and it goes just the opposite? And I said, oh yes, of course it does. It does. Sometimes it's because the person who is, well, for example, in the early 80s, there was a discussion on nuclear arms treaties. A lot of towns were discussing it. And they thought that voting on that in Bradford would take some different world view. Most people didn't think that. And so they had a, began a little, what could have been, it was in some towns, lengthy discussion about whether they should vote if they voted nuclear arms treaties. And then Jim Perry, who was a highly respected and conservative businessman, got up and said, I don't think this is going to do any good, but it certainly is not going to do any harm. That ended the discussion, the motion was made to post debate, and it was passed. So you see, it went from this to that when Jim Perry said, it's not going to do any harm. And so that was an interesting way in which that honeybee, and actually, I think that ended up in the book. That example ended up in the book. And that book, by the way, is at the Bradford Public Library, called Honeybee Democracy. So, and I could go on and on, not about stories because it was fun to be moderator for all of those years. And this day, when I retired, I decided I needed a parliamentarian, and so I'm still a parliamentarian. The face-to-face meetings are run according to Roberts Rules of Order. The Roberts Rules of Order book is that thick, and it can be very cumbersome. And so the moderator calls on me to help him deal with the intricacies of the rules. And so it's state law, parliament rules, and local tradition that determine how the meeting is run.
Larry, can you actually, sorry, I want to interrupt your flow, but can you, if anybody isn't familiar with Roberts Rules, can you just go over like an example of how, but what?
Sure. Roberts Rules of Order, for example, you, to get an article, well, let's say that you were discussing, you need a motion, so Article 5 is in front of you, you need a motion to put it on the floor so can we open the discussion, and a second. Okay, so now you've got a motion on the floor, and the group goes through that motion. Now, this person over here says, I don't think that that's enough money. So I move to amend that, to add $20,000 to it. That's seconded. Okay, so then, focus of the group is on we amend. So they both, they discuss that amendment, vote it up or down. If it's down, it's gone. If it's up, then it's added to the main motion. And now you have an amended motion on the floor. And so you discuss that. And you can add all the kinds of amendments you want. In Congress, they go on for days and days and days, but you could add all the amendments you want. The only thing is, you can only have one motion and one amendment on the floor at a time. And that makes it easier. Otherwise, you might have six or seven things, okay, which one do we vote in? And again, the moderator, a moderator who understands that, so that's his function, her function, is to guide the meeting forward through those pitfalls. One that I never seem to be able to convince people is that nominations don't need to be seconded. And motions, yes, amendments, yes, no for nominations. That is because Roberts, as Roberts rules, have certain rights for each individual. And that is, even if nobody likes you, you have a right to nominate yourself. And you don't even need one single supporter, but your name is in there and can be put into the election. Of course, you probably won't get it, but nevertheless, that's a right. And a similar right is cutting off debate. Cutting off debate takes two-thirds vote because it deprives the minority of the right to continue to vote, discuss an issue. So it takes more to close it off and say, okay, you've got to shut up. Does that help?
Yeah, and that's good. Is that, is that like the process?
Is that too much?
No, no, I always wonder, like, some people are confused on if they're allowed to like make a motion and that kind of stuff.
And I would say, anyone who goes to the meeting, ask, Mr. Moderator, I'm not quite sure how to do this, but this is what I want to do. Is it proper for me to do this at this time or not? And the moderator, with the help of the parliamentarian, would say, it's a great idea, it's just not the appropriate time. Or, can we help you fashion what you want? Is this what you really wanted to say? And you can, the moderator will help you with that. Don't be afraid. Okay? Now, I think I'm, my next thing is to talk a little bit about how to read the annual report.
Oh, and let me, for those on Zoom and in the room, why don't I like pull that up? So I can read and see. What?
There we go. Okay, this is a beautiful, beautiful document. Michelle Sherburne at General Opinion, I think, is primarily responsible for putting it together, and she's done a wonderful job. I did go to the Town Historical Society and pick out a 1939 report, and you can see the difference.
Whoa.
Okay, back then, there was no fall in the rock. Although they did have a picture, the falls on the front. But it was just merely the most, just money. It's pretty much money and the warning. That was about it, a little report from the select board, but mostly money. And also, who didn't pay the taxes?
And the report is of Michelle and the auditors.
Yes, that's right. Yeah.
Sherburne, and then Erin O'Dell, and then Mary O'Grady. Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Larry, yeah, I know you've seen numerous amounts of these town reports. Do you feel like having these photos and stuff really attract people, readers, to want to read it more than if it's just plain numbers?
Oh, yes, I think it's a lovely book, and it's a keeper.
Yeah, it's a piece of history.
Yeah, it's got a lot of stuff in it that should be kept, right? So, let's take a look at what the most significant parts of it, it's sort of, there's sort of like five or six parts of it. The most important one, well, first, if you look through it, there's the list of the officers and their candidate, you know, and their terms of office, and they're appointed, elected officers and appointed ones. But the most important first thing is the warning. And again, think about the word, one, you are warned, that this is the agenda for the annual town meeting. Other things may be brought up at the end under, over the camp vote this year, the normal times, there's an article that says other items. But nothing can be voted on that holds the town responsible. You can't vote any money, anything like that. So usually, those things are, they'll get the sense of the meeting. What do you think about the amendment? The moderator may not even take a vote, they'll say, well, how many want to do this? Let's hear it, gentlemen, show of hands. So you're showing to the select board that they might next year be talking about this or that. Okay, so the officers are there at the warning, elected and appointed. And that number of elected and appointed officers has mushroomed over the past few years. So that you have a lot of commissions and warrants and that sort of thing that they didn't used to have. Then, the real nuts and bolts of it is the budget. There are budgets for the general funds. You want, you want to go to?
Yeah, I was gonna, I didn't keep up with the officers. There's the officers.
So you're going to page 18. Okay, so there's a number of, the general fund is all of the things that the town government does except the highways. And so all of the other things, appropriations for the police, appropriations for the library, appropriations for running the town office, all of those things that the town does except the highways. That's a separate budget. So you have that. And it's outlined so that you can see what the budget was for two years ago, and what actually was spent a year ago, and what was actually spent, and then what is being budgeted for this year. So it gives you, the voter, an opportunity to look down and say, hmm, let's see, summer camp, they spent, oh, this, and they're not spending anything now. And so you might ask the question, why? Okay, so then you go to the next major budget, which is the highway. Okay, and so again, the summer and winter maintenance and administration, the guys that do a wonderful job with the highways. And again, it's set up the same way, a couple of years so that you can do. And then, not all of the budget has to be raised by taxes. So we always say, what amount is actually going to be raised by taxes? Because there's obviously going to be money coming from other sources, rent or grants or whatever. So other sources of income, so that not the budget totally doesn't have to be raised properly. Just like we should say, we're going to abortion it. Okay? Then, there's the treasures report, and that really carries forward all of the material that has been, that you've seen in the previous ones about where money came from, and also, if there are any general funds or assets that the town has. Now, on 33, you've got a list of delinquent taxpayers, and that is always the subject of controversy. Especially because there is some time lag between the town meeting and when this was published. And so, for John Sniff, I paid off all those taxes that appears to be this month. And so some towns don't even do that, I think, but we've done that. I suppose, it was the feeling that if I have to pay my taxes, I want to know who's not, and I want to hold their feet required. Okay, so then there's the reports of the officers, auditors, and the select board, and that's obviously a really important one because they're the main operators. That's why they're called the select board, they have the selected individuals to run the town. And then listers, zoning administrators, planning commission, another, these are all official parts of the town, and they're reporting on their activities for the year. And again, as compared to 1939, this is luminous, you know, so.
Trying to find the end of town meetings.
Yeah, and then, and one of the things here that I thought, there's a little bit, one is they begin to mix in organizations that are not town, but they may be town-financed, or not. And so you get a whole, if any group that wants to put in a report, the town seems willing to put it into the report and be a report, and I think that's, that's fine. So, reported the Vermont State Leader Incentive Program, okay? That's a good program. I'm not sure it gets any money from the town of Bradford, but it's in there. And so you get a whole myriad of those kinds of things. And some of them are, again, organizations like that call for appropriations. They're not part of the regular budget, and they're asking you to give some money under the warning, and those are the ones that are voted on separately. And then, and then lastly, and sometimes this might be a tough way to back, and you wonder why, is the report of last year's meeting. And in this case, on page 99, it's one page, and it's all of the ballot votes. And you can see that last year, 295 people voted by ballot. The Bradford Academy has about 295 seats, and I've never known the town meetings that every seat occupied. So I think that's indicative of the fact that you did get more people to vote. Normally, what you would get is a two- or three-page report of motions and discussion and all of that sort of thing. So it would be a more of a factual thing because there was more, there were more facts about it. Are you happy to answer questions that anyone has?
Oh, Mike has to stand up.
Yes, Mike.
Yeah, so it seems like you get a lot more voters to vote Australian ballot, whether it's, you know, because normally, you know, town meetings during the week, or some people just aren't able to attend, or some people just are afraid to speak up. If the system keeps going Australian ballot in the future, what would be a good way, you think, that could, whether, you know, right now, we're doing the formal meeting, but it's so close to the election for people, is there a way to potentially do something like that a little sooner in order to inform people so they could ask, you know, a potential moderator these questions sooner rather than waiting until the last minute? I feel that, you know, there's not a lot of time for people to ask these questions and think on them before they actually have to elect on them Australia ballot, and where some people are already getting their ballots early. I didn't know how you kind of bridge that gap, you think?
Yeah. I don't know off the top of my head. I think that probably having people who go to town to the select board meetings and get the word out about things, that doesn't do any harm. In other words, having, you know, having people, having the town, having the ministers of the select board and others in the paper where possible, so that people are aware of some of these things and aren't just at town meeting time aware of them. But, I don't know, we have, people lead very busy lives, and there are some people, apparently a lot of people, who are willing to say, well, we don't have a representative town meeting as Bradlborough has, but I think that's a pretty good idea. I'm just going to let those people who show up be my representative, and I'll do it, I'll accept whatever they say. I'm happy with whatever they say.
Another thing I've heard discussed a lot is the timing for town meetings, that it's on Tuesday mornings, right? So people who work can't necessarily, so I was wondering if there's been a lot of, I've heard there's been a push to have it on a weekend instead of Friday.
It actually, actually, had it not been for the virus, we would have had a Saturday meeting last year. So it's already been changed. And one unfortunate thing was the way in which Bradford voted to have a Saturday town meeting. It now puts it at the end of February vacation. And I think they really need to think about that.
Well, it has to be.
Legally, it couldn't be happened. We voted for it twice or after.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. But legally, it had to be.
That's why I got delayed, because it was the wrong, it was an illegal date. It had to be.
But that's unfortunate.
It is unfortunate.
Really unfortunate, that the date doesn't allow you to have a little more flexibility. I suppose what you could do, you could always do with a communiting, adjourn, recess to a time later. But let's just let you on the deal with that.
It's really the school that changes the vacation.
That's true.
Get pretty hard.
He's joking, for anyone who sees this on YouTube. I was just going to share just a few things for people who might see this later on YouTube and stuff. So if you go to the town website, bradford-et.us, the town report for this year is right here, and then I'll open a PDF that you can download. Also thinking it might be worth, so as far as registering to vote, that's something. Sometimes there's voter registration events, anybody can actually hold a voter registration event. Rotary did one last fall. But you can also go to the Secretary of State, so sos.vermont.gov, and then there's an elections division. And you can register online, or you can request a paper version, or go to your town clerk's office. So anybody can do that at any time. And then you can always see your, I gotta Google it, but, you can always, where's my voter page? Oh, there it is, it was right below. All right. So you can, I'm not going to put in all my information in front of everybody, it can record it, but you put in your information, your first name, last name, date of birth, your driver's license or social security, and you can go ahead and see results of past votes. And you can see, can we see the warning? I don't know if you can see the warning, but you can often see just the breakdown of like past votes, right? Especially like when, you can see the election results.
Sure.
Yeah, and then you can see also when you're, when the upcoming, the next upcoming vote is going to be and where it's going to be held. Which for us is at the Bradford Academy on March first, from ten AM to seven PM all day. And you can actually register, if you forget, you can register in person at that time as well. Other pieces of?
Monique? On the My Voter page, you can click on it and you can see, you can request a ballot for this election. You can see, you can see if it's been mailed, and then if you mail it back, you can see if it's been received.
Awesome, that's a really good point, Marcy, thank you. And in addition to that, adding on to that, you can request from the town clerk at any time by calling the office or probably emailing to get an absentee ballot mailed to you as well.
So not everyone's getting a ballot.
Right, yes. It has happened in the past during COVID, especially with the, like, the federal elections, but yeah, so you, if, you need to be in person on March first to vote unless you request absentee ballot ahead of time. And you need to stick it in the mail to get there by March first, or you can go drop it off in, like, the drop box outside the VA. There's a little red box on the door that you can drop it in as well.
And there's no provision if your ballot arrives late. I mean, well, if I put my, put my ballot in mailbox here, it goes to Nashua.
Yeah.
Timbuktu and back to Bradford, and then maybe it gets sent back to St. Johnsbury, so it might not arrive. So I would not trust the mail unless you're giving it two weeks, two weeks. I just drop it in that little box outside of the VA.
Yeah, agreed.
But you can go into town hall and get the ballot.
Yes, you can.
Or you can have it sent to you and they just drop it. I'd, I'd really be reluctant about mailing a ballot.
That's a good point.
A week before you're like, might, might or might not get it.
Good point, yeah. And then for more information, too, we just had a candidate forum for the select board members on Tuesday, right? And that is on, that was recorded, so that's available on connectingbradford.com. If you are on this, a quick link is just to Town Meeting Resources twenty twenty two. If you click on this, it shows the event the other night and the event tonight. And then the select board is hosting an informational meeting on next Thursday at six thirty PM on Zoom. And you have to go to the Bradford Select Board page to get that Zoom, it's not a recurring short link or anything. And the YouTube to the candidates event is right here, if you want to watch it. Um, so there's, right now, there's a, it's basically staggered. So there's a two-year term, which is Dan Harry III and Michael Wright was on, is, are going up again, going up for. And then there's a three-year term, and the candidates for that are Brandon Vudro, Josh Allen, Jennifer Whitney and Zach Laar.
And that one is by majority, so it's, I believe that's right, I think that's the way it's by majority vote. I'm not sure.
No, I don't, then I'll. You're the expert.
But I know that from the floor, it has to be on majority vote.
So how does that work? How does that work with the Australian ballot, like?
That's a good budget, and I should have.
No, it's okay, I don't either. I should know that too.
It may be whoever gets the most votes.
No, but I think you're right, I think there was something.
The top two vote again.
Yeah, because there was, there was a office last year that didn't have a majority, and so nobody got it.
I believe that's the case.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because I think the law says, select, select board members have to get a majority vote.
That's good.
We might not end up with it, though, like, if there's four candidates in a race, right?
Well, unless one person is so, so good that that person gets elected by fifty, plus one vote.
So it's going to be a mail winner. Four people ready for one slot.
Yes, yeah, right.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, my question, I think Larry just answered it, was, you know, there's four candidates running for the three-year term, and if it's majority, the votes are, there is the possibility for a closer run where maybe you have a two-way tie or even a three-way tie if the, you know, voters are split. What do they do in a situation like that if there is four voters and it is Australian ballot? How do you revote for a, or how does that ties, you know, break?
I don't know. Let me tell you how it would be in a traditional town meeting. In a traditional town meeting, you would, you would vote again, if it was a candidate, you'd vote again with all three candidates. And then the la, in the third vote, the lowest one must drop out. So you keep dropping out until you just have two, and then obviously one is going to win. But say you had eight candidates, okay, there's a process for eliminating, I assume someone would drop out. But let's just say there were eight, you really have to drop not one at a time, one vote at a time. Whoever gets the least, that's the drop out. So we, procedure for that, but this one is new to me.
I'm messaging Sonia, she's going to recall.
Well, hopefully that doesn't happen to help those who count the votes make it easier.
Yeah, a, a word from people who do count the ballots, please don't write in random stuff. Like, I mean, there's something to be said for writing in actual names, but so many people write in Mickey Mouse or Donald Duck or Homer Simpson or, yeah.
To be fair, maybe in a, in eight hundred ballots, you'll get five. Which maybe is their way of showing their disdain for the candidates who are there.
I did that once to make sure my vote was counted, I put in somebody a funny name.
That's funny, just to see the results.
Just to make sure my vote was counted.
So what would happen, Marcy, if Donald Duck got the majority of votes, though?
I don't know, for this select board, it might be an improvement.
Wait a minute, Ryan, Ryan, aren't you on the select board, Ryan? Was that toward you being a Donald Duck?
I might resign, but I don't know.
Any questions for anybody particularly new people who've never gotten to see this awesome process happen?
It's a wonderful.
If I would, I think it's fun.
Life might, love for this sort of thing.
Well, one of the tasks I would say had, you know, everybody could go. And then the last time we were in, it was representative. But when everybody could go, and this was a pretty big town. And there was like a, like a town employee that come up, you know, we just stacked that meeting, you know, with like a hundred, two hundred people like that worked for the town, they wanted something to go through or they didn't want something. So, you know, like, there is a way to stack the meetings, if you're really not, something very divisive. And every time there was one of those, it was like a call up to everybody that would work for the town. Get there, you gotta get there, you know, so, you know, I don't know if they do that here.
Well, I think in, in, in terms of attendance over the years, if there's not, you know, just an ordinary budget, if you go up maybe two, three percent, no, there's no contest between candidates. Some people show up just because they, like, it's a circus and it's the best theater in town. But otherwise, you're not going to draw, draw. And then if there's a big contest or the fire department wants a beastly expensive equipment, they don't get all the firemen there and their families and like this. So, yeah, that's a little bit on what's to be discussed, because otherwise it can't be.
Always been at one thing every year.
But I can tell you, the people from China were impressed. They were so impressed by the ability, and actually, if I remember correctly, what they were planning was to create town meetings of this sort in local communities throughout China. And I don't know if it ever happened, but that's what this report needs to do. And they were going to use Bradford as a model. I'd have to relate to that. I, no, I don't remember, but the, the person who was in charge of, who had written a book on Vermont town meetings was a professor at UVM, who was really, he thought that we did a really good job at Bradford. And so that's, people would go ahead and say, okay, where's your, we'll go to Bradford, go build up with you. And they decided that we have lunch, and you know, there's my, they get to eat lunch with us. Which was another advantage of the regular old-fashioned town meeting. Was that you got to eat lunch with people. I remember in fairly, when we attended there for a couple of times, that fairly, we had a fairly simple town meeting. And sometimes it would seem as though they were going to be over too early to go to the ladies' luncheon. And the ladies had already prepared the luncheon. And so it kind of stretched it out a little bit to justify staying in Tahu, so they could, and so people would stay for lunch.
I kind of miss if there's no meal anymore. I didn't even, I don't know that I even eat it, but I went sat down, like, that was fun. Anybody else, anybody on Zoom? Mike, I saw your kids, do you have any kids, don't even have any questions?
Oh, no, they wanted to say hi, so that's, they should want to get on and wave, and my son wanted to wave, but they're they're, they're getting geared up for bed, so that's when they usually get hyperventilating.
Hi, kids. Anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Oh, no, I, I pushed a button accidentally, my, my son is playing a my son's pretending is a zombie coming in and unplugging my computer on me.
Well, thank you so much, everybody, and thanks, Larry, for doing this.
Sure.
Yeah. Well, thanks, everybody on Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, bye. I'll post this to connectingbradford.com again, on that same page that the other video is.